I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
None, Madam Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
No presentations, announcements, or acknowledgements. Is anyone here for a public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, everybody. Tom, Scott County Commissioner, just a couple of things today. Eighteen thirteen, you go what? That's completed, that roundabout, and it looks pretty nice. Twenty seven, I don't know if anyone takes that, down toward Public Savage. The guy that's in charge of that told me October fifteenth will be done. If you go down there and look at today, no way you think October fifteen, this year or next year? Parks and Trails, I had a meeting with them yesterday, and they want to get a grant to get some, to finish the whole trail plan. The little sheet they showed me with the parks and trails on it was the same one they showed me fourteen years ago when I started, and it looked like it was a little bit older at the time. I said, when do you think this will be done? That's gonna be a long time. So anyhow, you have to buy up all these individual, you have to deal with every individual landowner to get access for a bike trail or something, so it's going to be difficult. So keep the posted on that. And we're looking at a seven point two percent levy increase right now. I know that Danny would say it's seven point four, our finance guy or deputy administrator, but we're hoping it can go down if there's some sort of special session that would patch up some of the band dates that are unfunded that are on us for helping Human Services. It's a couple million bucks, and that's about two or three percent levy. Then also, the library, I'm hoping by the end of the month has the access hours, and you guys have probably heard about that, from six in the morning till ten every night with a special card and background check and stuff, so I think that'd be great. So that's all I have tonight.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close with a public comment. Anything to be pulled from the consent agenda?
No, motion to approve consent, second.
Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
No public hearings, onto general business.
City Council is being asked to authorize allocation of ARPA dollars for qualifying expenses. In the past, Council will recall that we had authorized use of dollars associated with the I-35 Utility Extension Project in both the Water and Sewer Fund, that we had allocated a portion of those dollars to fund a portion of the Woodcrest Sewer Improvement Project, that we had funded the Wildwing Sewer Improvement Project, which was unexpected and unbudgeted with those dollars as well. Those infrastructure projects were qualifying projects. Then also, the audiovisual improvements to the council chambers. I believe the dollar amount here was for the entire project, including the training room, so then that portion was funded by gambling donation dollars from the fire relief. And then the building permit and public works software, which we are in the process of implementing. We are asking the council to consider four additional uses for those dollars. The audiovisual improvements for a change order for the council chambers, basically larger screens. The original proposal, after we saw what was implemented in the back room, they were proposing smaller screens in here, and we're like, you know, we need to, they need to be a little larger. And then there were some additional items, a change orders related to supply chain issues and pieces of equipment. The web redesign and hosting, so we have not done a redesign on our website for a number of years. And the primary issue is we need to get it up to date with current technology for accessibility, but we also will provide us with additional capabilities with an updated template and an updated tool. We're proposing basically purchase a three-year package, or two-year package, excuse me, a community development large format printer plotter, so it's gonna be something that we can print those larger maps on. We'd actually acquired one for two hundred dollars from the city of New Prairie, their old one, which we managed to use for a very short period of time before it started having all kinds of issues. And we got down to the point where the cost of trying to fix it with a low degree of confidence, it was interest, the issues basically made it dysfunctional. This not only would provide greater capacities in the office, but it would be offset by expense, because right now, if we need a map or anything, we have to call Rich, and so we have to pay. And although they are very responsive, there's the time delay and the cost at engineering firm rates for them to print, to get it, get it back to us. So we think this is a good opportunity to use one-time dollars for a capital expense. And then the last item is laptops for administration to continue to implement, providing for mobile remote, mobile and remote access for our staff within the office. Quite honestly, it allows them greater flexibility to be able to work remotely, work from home, continue to be in contact with the office when they're at conferences and other items, other locations. And also provides for flexible workspaces actually within City Hall when there's other activities going on. And that would be an additional seven thousand dollars, so we'd be asking for the council to allocate dollars for those expenses at an estimated twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. That will leave us roughly eighty thousand dollars for other expenses. The council should be aware that we are in the process of looking at possibly changing out our fund accounting software. And that may be another expense that we're currently considering, and it's on the list of items that we'd originally presented to the council. If there's any questions on any of these items, many of the relevant staff are in the room right now.
Is the TVs on back order, or what's the situation with those?
There's another, Linda.
On back order?
I think there's another one that's on back order too. So the last we heard, they're looking for installation ended this month.
Twenty six months, times out.
Okay.
Has the council seen fully implemented training rooms? So before you leave tonight, I'll give you a quick presentation, a quick show on how it all works. It's amazing how much having good work in technology can improve efficiency for meetings and use of space.
If we don't spend this money, what happens to it?
Goes back to the state.
I don't want to do that.
Isn't there really like no restrictions on what it can be spent on?
There are, there are some broad restrictions. Kelly's actually our resident expert on that, and regularly we use all the guidance documents that comes out. You basically can't use it to buy down your own operating expenses. It has to be capital, something to do with something placed, enhancement of the existing service. You just can't take it and just say, okay, we're gonna continue to do certain things. We were able to, and essentially what we did is when we got it, reimbursed ourselves eligible expenses. We were allowed to do that under the way they set up the guidance. So we now have this pot of money, but that still has to be used for certain qualifying expenses.
I just feel kind of crappy just spending money to spend money. Something just doesn't feel right about it, but I get it.
Well, to be honest, the laptops we will be doing eventually, but now we're doing it with outside revenues instead of property tax revenues. The printer we had been talking about anyways, I'd actually, staff is actually coming to ask to do it. I just suggested using this as a funding source. The website redesign, that's something we need to do anyways. This just provides a revenue source for it, aside from our regular revenue sources. And the audiovisual improvements for the council chambers, that is new, but that was a high priority for the council.
No, no can be wrong. I mean, I think all these things are necessary, needed, just, I don't know, it just feels like we're, we, all of us, all cities, all different, whatever, we could be doing just better, just to spend money, to spend money that we're given. You know, one of the future potential things that I was thinking about, that I talked to you briefly about, was could we set aside some of that money, I can't remember what the total was, I'm not seeing it in front of me now, was setting it aside for community events, you know, like ten thousand a year for the next how many years?
I think in our conversation, we're talking about sweep dollars, which is-
Oh, that's a separate one.
Never mind, I'll actually bring that up in the future discussion.
Okay. I think this looks good. I think these are good uses, especially the previously authorized ones that we've already done. I think this is a good use of these dollars, so I'm on board with it.
And do we have to figure out the seventy-nine then, today, or when does that have to be spent by?
We actually have until the end of next year to spend those dollars. From a staff standpoint, we try and identify items that we would likely do at some point anyways, but as we're leaving, but as bringing up other resources to use for the budget.
I think this was covered when we talked about these other previously authorized uses that we did, but it cannot be used for like new positions like wages or anything like that, correct? It's gotta be-
Like the one-time, it can't be stored away like a couple of projects, it can't cover any of that. Like everything that's on the list is almost like responding to COVID. I mean, you can come home, you can do your Zooms, you know, Zoom from home, so it's kind of all that electronic web stuff is kind of the beast mode, but yeah, it can't look like new positions or anything like that.
What about wire meters?
I tried. I believe Corey pitched that early on.
All right, well-
All right.
So then-
Motion, go ahead, I'll go first.
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two fifty-eight, establishing allocations for American Rescue Plan funds.
Second.
Motion by me, second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we are on to reports.
First item under reports is budget, so now we'll get to that, but the idea would be reference. All right, so tonight we are presenting the council with the second draft of the 2023 budget, and those portions of the budget specifically that are supported all earned part by property tax dollars. So it gets back to our preliminary budget and preliminary levy, which we will need to adopt at our next council meeting. So just running through the usual three slides, that the tool, the budget is a tool for implementing council policy, vision, goals. It is a method for us to allocate finite resources for improvements, programs, and public services, and it serves as a directive for staff. And again, I always like to reiterate that once the council adopts the budget, you're basically authorizing staff within our fiscal policy guidelines to implement the budget and utilize it as a resource to get stuff done. It doesn't mean we spend it out, but we have up to those amount of resources to get things done that you've identified. So tonight, we want to review again the assumptions being used to develop the budget, identify, we're gonna go over the notable items, things that review what we talked about at the last meeting, but things that have changed in the current draft. We'll present you with the updated estimated tax impact, and if you want to, we can walk through specific aspects on a line and a basis of the second draft of the budget. And then at the end of the night, we're hoping for you to give us direction on any further refinements before we complete the draft budget and adopt preliminary budget. Couple things to keep in mind, as always, accept current and likely future realities. Yep, we could solve all of our budget woes if we assume that our tax base was gonna grow by a hundred percent next year, but that's not gonna happen, for example. So would that be like realistic in our assumptions? Match sources and uses, so you want to use ongoing revenues for ongoing expenses. You want to use one-time dollars for things that you only need to spend money on that one time. Avoid kicking the can, think strategically and long-term, and take advantage of opportunities, and most of all, create and maintain flexibility to respond to the unknown and unforeseen, so you can bounce with the bad and take advantage of the good. So we talked about with the first draft, a number of notable assumptions, and most of these have not changed. We have, on a couple of items which I'll bring up, talked about laddering our debt over a period of time, rather than having our debt levy jump from here way up to here. Because of this great tool we have, the Capital Projects Fund, we can buffer the impact of those additional debt issuances over a number of years and ladder it in, and reduce the tax impact in a single year over a number of years. One of the things that we have associated with that is the three eighteen fund deficit. That fund is in deficit, and we've laddered in increasing debt levy of twenty thousand dollars per year through 2029, or 2025 on that one, which would then get us up to the maximum levy amount, so we can retire the debt, or the deficit associated with that particular fund. The annual incremental increase for additional debt that we are buffering with the Capital Projects Fund, that will be an additional sixty-three thousand dollars through 2029, every year. New public works maintenance, one, that's an additional thirty, almost forty thousand dollars. The reallocation of public work salary expense, increase in parks' capital outlay. We had talked about a reduction in construction activity. Staff had recommend as an assumption twenty-five new housing permits or their equivalent this coming year. Council was one of these more optimistic assumption, and we, that's been changed to thirty-five, and I'll talk about that in a subsequent slide. Right now, we're estimating increased energy costs of almost twenty-five thousand dollars, and the contingency is at three percent. Typically, when we adopt the final budget, it's typically around one, one and a half percent. Now it's at three percent, and so that higher dollar amount can potentially inflate the budget a little bit. I do, I will talk a little bit more about that as we continue on the presentation. Other notable assumptions is we do have an election, or don't have an election in that year, so we don't have any election expenses, so that's to our benefit. The Assistant to the City Administrator position, Mark Nagel's position, is no longer in the budget, so that helps us out. Engineering services, we're recommending a budgeted decrease based on historical activity, and the same thing with the consulting planner. The net of everything up there is a net increase, in isolation of each of those items, of ten point five percent tax impact to our residents. Now, we have made changes since the first draft of the budget. We made the change from twenty-five to thirty-five permits based on direction from council. We also changed the planner one position to only half a year, being that we don't anticipate hiring that position, and it's currently budgeted before the end of the year. And if we hire it next year, we're splitting the difference based on whether it gets hired in the first half or the second half of the year. That provides some additional savings in the budget. We did see a very minimal increase in our local government aid this year, but we did see a double that and a reduction in our fiscal disparities for this year. We did have a change in the timing of debt service associated with our equipment certificates. We were originally expecting to issue that debt the latter part of this year. It looks like we're gonna be issuing it the early part of next year, so that slides the timing of when we have to pay debt service associated with that debt. And so some assumptions associated with that have also been incorporated. Pending assumptions, things we don't know. Coal adjustment. In most years, we already have existing labor contracts in place, and any coal adjustments are already baked into the budget. We don't know what that's going to be. We have a wage opener for 2023. I think it is a fair assumption that, just as kind of a sway, you can assume that half of the contingency will go to that. So we go from three percent contingency to one and a half percent contingency to deal with any other noise that I'm talking about after this. Twenty twenty-three state and fire ride has not been certified, so we're currently estimating. The twenty twenty-three insurance costs are currently estimated, so that would be help, all our benefits insurances. We do have an estimate in there, but it could be more, it could be less. The timing and cost for transition to an alternative IT solution for the city of Savage, we currently have a contract that would allow us to go at the end of 2023. They are really, really, really indicating they want to be done at the end of this year, and they've been active in identifying solutions based on some of the finalists. We've tried to estimate a budget, and that's currently incorporated, but at this point, it's still an estimate. Special assessment with contract with the county for 2023 has not been executed yet. Now, Tom's not here, but that's something we typically have by now, so we're waiting to get that. So what does that all translate into? Well, again, for reference, approximately twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars and change in the levy equates to a one percent tax impact, and that's thirteen to fourteen dollars annually for each one percent. So we're at eight point eight percent. Then I know, I sent everybody out a text last week saying, hey, I think we might be able to get down to something lower than that, but when we got through final proofing and everything else, we're at eight point eight, which is actually where we kind of estimated, if you recall, where we would probably end up with a lot of these changes. Means that we'll be looking at about a nine point three percent levy increase, or the equivalent of about two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Now, the one thing I'd ask the council to keep in mind is that just with our debt laddering, we're baking in about a four percent increase every year. So the other four point eight percent is a whole new position, increased energy costs, other operational costs, et cetera. So all being said, relative, and it's easy for me to say, I don't think that's horrible, but we also have less flexibility as we get later. I think we have to recognize that. We have less flexibility than we usually do as we get later into the budget process. One, we still have to absorb the coal. It's not gonna leave a lot of contingency left over. So normally, hypothetically, at this point here, that would already be baked in, and if we still had the full three percent of contingency, we could write down one to two percent of that, and that would save us one to two percent tax impact. I don't think we're going to have that ability. What I think will help us is if we have, for instance, our insurance numbers, if we get a positive result on that, that may incrementally help us. If energy prices, energy prices look like they might continually be going down, and we feel we can lower that number, that might incrementally help us. But I don't think we're gonna have as much flexibility as we typically have at the end of the budget process. Now, going into preliminary budget, if you adopt, our intent would be, unless you give further direction, we would make any adjustments based on any other updated information we get between now and the end of the month. But our intent would basically to take this budget presented to you as the preliminary budget. That's not the final budget, as you guys know. We're just setting the maximum levy that we can utilize, and we still have a period of time in which we can continue to work through the budget all the way up until December. So that being said, questions, or do you have any feedback?
What, what dollar amount, estimated dollar amount are we looking at between the difference of twenty-five building permits to thirty-five building permits?
Give Kelly a second shot, Floyd.
The only reason why I say that is I was not here for that meeting, and it makes me a little bit concerned that we're thinking about going to thirty-five as an assumption. I think that's a little bit high, in my opinion. And I personally would feel a lot comfortable, a lot more comfortable with twenty-five over thirty-five, so I'm just curious to know what that difference in dollar amount might be.
Well, and that would be twenty-five or their equivalent, so for example, included in there would be, for instance, the QuickTrip permit, which is probably going to be equivalent to multiple homes. If you had, for instance, a large industrial user that pulled a building permit after the first of the year, that would be worked in there. If they pulled it before the end of the year, it would not. There are a number of variables in there, so it's simple family homes or their equivalent. If we had, for example, next year, Geiger moves forward their project, or Joseph LLC, their projects would be worth multiple homes. So I think that was part of the logic that the council used at the-
I would, I would still be concerned, even given that.
We're gonna go with forty.
You guys are crazy. Sorry. It just seems, it seems really, it seems really high. I mean, if you think about, because what are we at this year right now?
We think we'll probably crawl just under the forty.
Maybe just-
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Right, and we're talking about a year that we had a great start to the year for the first four and a half, five months, but, you know, it has slowed a lot, and I expect it to kind of stay at that same level for next year, so that concerns me that we're looking at that amount.
So if we went back to the twenty-five, it's roughly a one percent, it's a point nine percent impact, so we'd go back to nine point seven.
Yeah, that's a big deal. That's high. So I'm just putting it out there, that, that, that would be a concern for the budget. I think we should be a little bit more conservative if not.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I am all about being more aggressive, so, and we've argued in the past, where the staff tends to be more conservative. We've always pushed a little, or I, I'll speak for myself. I've always pushed for a little bit more aggressiveness. We got the neighborhood going in, across the firehouse, we'll get that going, we'll get an apartment or two, we'll get an industrial user, we'll get QuickTrip, we'll be good.
Okay. I don't have, I don't share the same feeling, even though that we're moving dirt, we're, you know, we're getting lots ready. I would, I would want to lean more on the conservative side for this year. You know, if we were talking last year, I would be all on board, let's push full steam ahead, but-
I agree, yeah, just things have changed.
Pushed, increased it last year as well, probably not by ten, I can't remember exactly. I know both Joe and Kim at that meeting were for increasing that number.
I don't know, for me personally, when we're looking at the preliminary budget, obviously, things can change over the next few months, and we're setting kind of the max ceiling. I would prefer to set a higher max ceiling so that we can adjust in the next couple of months, because we're gonna find out a lot more information too in the next few months. You know, there's a lot of things that are still outstanding. We can tell a lot about how the market is gonna shift to in the next couple of months. So personally, I, I, I think it's better to go higher.
The advantage, of course, is the flexibility that Bryce is talking about. The flip side to it is the perception issue, because when everybody gets their T and T statement in October or November, it's based on the preliminary budget, and that usually sets their perception regardless of what other changes we make, and so it just comes down to, as a council, what you feel is appropriate, what you want to defend.
I like to deliver better news in the end, you know, and give them the worst-case scenario, in my opinion, and then all of a sudden, they're like, oh, it's two percent less than what we projected it to be. Great, awesome. But on the other side of that, if we're not budgeting more carefully, and we're making some pretty, you know, some, some assumptions that, you know, who knows if it's gonna go that way or not, I don't know, I just, that's my gut.
If a large user were to pull a permit this year, how does that, I mean, I know we're talking about budgets, so this would be like actual like dollars, how does that affect, I guess?
So it's not lost dollars. What would happen is we'd probably come in with a really good budget here, you know, better than expected. We've then, when we get finished the audit, we would have additional dollars that we could potentially sweep, which we typically sweep into Capital Projects Fund, which then buys down that sixty-three thousand dollars a year, which is a good opportunity to talk about the sweep right now.
Well, before you do that, you know, if you compromise and not to completely blow up what, you know, the previous council, or that the previous meeting, neither one of us were at, I mean, and not to flip it on its head, you know, if we were to split the difference and go from twenty-five to thirty instead of all the way to thirty-five, would you feel more comfortable instead of reversing it all the way back to twenty-five? Pause noodle on that. So then going to the-
You asked me a question, though.
Do you want to answer it? I didn't know, you weren't ready to answer. You didn't seem like you were ready to answer, so I don't know.
If- If, if I had to put the number at anything, I would even go lower than twenty-five. I'd go to twenty. I mean, that's, that's how conservative I would want to be with that.
Right now.
I mean, because it, to me, because it has such a drastic impact on our budget, like, we're talking almost a full percent right now, just with ten building permits there. I, I, I like the fact of let's be even more conservative than that. And then if we have, I mean, because it, it's going to affect the next year's budget, you know, the following year's budget too. So, I don't know, I'm just.
I'm on the same page.
Yeah, and it's, it's, there's a, and there's longer term impacts. If you assume, if you go really high or really low from a normal trend, that correction at some point is going to really be, really help you or really hurt you, depending on which side of the line you go. So if you're overly conservative and you decide to bump it up over time, that's great. If you're overly optimistic and you have to pull it back, that's going to hurt you. You're going to have to buy that back in a future budget year if you're really not achieving that. So I would say, we always work on being, being conservative, but within that more realistic range, yeah. So do you guys want to make a change on that?
You weren't done with the thought. You asked me a question.
No, 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 I was going to, we can come back, we can come back to this, right? And, and the reason I say, so moving to the, the capital outlay side of things, I just had a question, why we keep putting more reserve money into things that have already exceeded, and in some cases exceeded by quite a bit, the estimated cost of the equipment? Because I added up about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of, if we didn't budget for stuff that we've already hit the cost of in our total reserve as of May seventeenth, why do we keep adding to it? If it's already above and beyond? If I'm looking at, I'm looking at page forty-six of the revised draft memo part of things.
Of the actual budget report?
Mm-hmm. The line items and whatever, purchase years and stuff like that. It has that all laid out, and we have, if I'm reading it correctly, I'm looking at the yellow line that says total reserve as of May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. It already exceeds what we think the estimated cost of that equipment is. Why do we keep putting more money into that reserve if it's already exceeded what we think the cost is?
Because we have to replace it again after that.
Because we're going to replace it again after that?
We're perpetually replacing it. So you may have enough money for it today. What we do do is we go in periodically, balance it. So if we find out that we're not spending as much, let's say, we, we're estimating it's going to be, that piece of equipment's thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're able to buy it at thirty-two thousand dollars, and the next time we're able to buy it at thirty-two thousand dollars, and we have six thousand. If you work ahead of the gate, we can start peeling that back, or we can reallocate those reserves to something else where the opposite is happening with all of the time. But the thing to keep in mind is if we just don't buy the piece of equipment, our capital, and I'm not looking at our way in front of you, but our general capital outlay is generally structured that we are perpetually replacing that piece of equipment. And so we try and keep it as even or as low of an upward slope as possible over that period of time. So even though we have made money, have enough money to replace it in twenty twenty-four, we're going to have to replace it again in twenty thirty-four, if that makes sense.
Okay. Were there some, well, and I, I'm looking at what you're talking about here. Were there some items that were scheduled to be purchased this year that have not yet been purchased?
Like the F-550 dump or the Toro Batwing.
The Toro Batwing was one of the ones that I was looking at, yeah.
Oh, the Toro Batwing is in.
Okay.
So part of it might be the time of year that you're looking at the reserves.
Well, yeah, and it's five seventeen, so, yeah.
So the Toro Batwing came in about a month and a half ago, so after that number was put in.
Okay.
Nice.
That served the, I think it's the, the five fifty, one of the other trucks that we purchased.
Yeah, the dump?
Yeah, the chassis just came in. I think about a week ago, we thought we checked for that. So I'll see if we'll develop it within this year. So some of those reserves may be extra high because of just, we haven't spent dollars within this year.
Okay. Then it makes more sense. I started with thirty-three thousand dollars potentially. So that's what I was going to say, hold on that, we don't even need to worry about it.
Some people like the, like a previous vehicle or something, who also would charge, like, to build, like, to, to use it inside and stuff to have that way. So maybe just showing that the.
The squad purchase itself, not the build out.
But then for the computer and the lights and the key count, I don't think it'll allow for it to be sold.
And what we've been finding is, it was great when we had chromed decks, because all the chromed decks, you could just take all your equipment and roll it forward forever. And we're finding recently that by the time that vehicle finishes its six-year life, the body styles have changed. We have to replace the cage and the mounts and all the interior stuff because they changed the body style, come to the old stuff.
Well, and I think you've answered my question, but not, and not to beat a dead horse here, but looking at this twenty twenty-nine trackless sidewalk machine, we already have twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred in it, and it's not supposed to be purchased until twenty twenty-nine. And it only costs twenty thousand, so we're already ten grand above.
Some of those need to be updated. You're not going to buy one for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
So that's one of the things too, and that, and that's part of the updates that maybe haven't been completed. But, uh, equipment prices are skyrocketing if you can even get it. I think the trackless we have, we bought for more than that, so.
Okay. I'm fine going back to twenty-five.
You're awesome. I like that.
I mean, I don't know if that completely blows up, but you guys talked the last, but it does, I mean, a little bit.
And I mean, it's not final, that's my point. It's, it's like, then it gives us a higher ceiling to work with. And then if we go, if we go back to thirty-five or whatever, we can do that, but I don't know.
Well, you guys are moving it in the conservative direction. So when full council's here at the next meeting, and you're like, nah, we really want to go back to thirty-five, you've got the ability to, you've got the flexibility to do that.
Totally, let's push it back. A little, a little gamesmanship going on.
Back to twenty-five, I'm going to be the common denominator that shows that Joey's amazing.
So, direction, change it to twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Talk about the sweep. So Kelly ran the numbers based on the normal formula that we use for calculating dollars that we can sweep out of the general fund, still maintain our minimum fund balance to another usable fund, put about fifty-three thousand dollars and change. The most common use for that is to sweep it into Capital Projects Fund because it continues to build those reserves and gives us greater capacity for buffering at debt in the future and buying down incrementally that step, from sixty-three thousand to maybe going to fifty-nine thousand dollars per year going forward. We have swept it in the past in the capital outlay to shore up items that either were unanticipated or are falling behind for whatever reason. We don't have any of those this year that come to mind. Or we've swept it sort of in the heat non-development fund, which you guys know is basically a pot of money that we use to pay for one-off things, usually studies and other items to facilitate development within the community. All, all of those are eligible. Like I said, we don't have anything specifically in the capital outlay. We would recommend the Capital Projects Fund. Another use, which I had promised that I would bring up, is you could technically choose, just leave it in your reserves and budget a deficit to buy down the levy. As you guys know, I always recommend doing that because you have to buy it back.
Recommend not doing that?
I recommend not doing that because you do have to buy it back following year.
And something else I was thinking of in just some informal conversations was, you know, could we, you know, we talked about fire rescue days, community picnic, and lots of laundry list of ideas of things that we could do in addition. And I don't know if throwing money at different events actually helps because you still need the volunteers, you still need people to help actually do it. But taking that and spreading it out over the next five years and doubling the budget or adding ten grand to pay for more cool things at fire rescue days and community picnic, or allocating some to those activities since there has been an interest.
I know, I'm like waiting for a jump for joy over there.
So, so that's definitely an option. Now, right now, we already have substantial reserves in that fund for some really good years, a number of years ago. And we've been buying down those reserves by basically budgeting a deficit already of about two grand a year. We could, if we added to the reserves, we would just expand that budget deficit. Now, keep that in mind, though, that once those reserves run out, you have to make up the difference if you want to continue to provide those events at that same level down the road. So it's maybe not a one-off, but it might be multi-off, that you some point have to, to do it. But you could, as you approach, you could work in, you could buy down the increase, so to speak, over a period of time. There's a number of ways you should play it.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to think of a way that the community would actually see the, the money. It's, you know, not a huge amount, so it's not going to help any capital thing too much. So just a way to have more fun with it and actually do something for the community that might actually benefit from it more directly, more immediately.
Yeah, the Capital Projects Fund, we ran some quick numbers. We think it would allow you to buy, buy down the step, three to four thousand dollars. So that'll get you about a point two percent, you know, reduction in the tax impact, not only this year, but also through twenty twenty-nine potentially. But it is, it, it's, it's not as tangible and an annual dollar amount back to the taxpayer. You know, it's, it's a fifth, it's, it's two and a half bucks a year.
But if that's a stupid idea, I would vote for the, probably the economic development over the capital outlay, but that's just me.
I like the idea. I think it's what, I think we had some sad people this year with fire rescue days. Instead of being able to have more, then start growing it and figuring out even, you ask, well, to carry it forward. You can do that, but then it would give us a chance to look at other ways to fund it, through sponsorships and stuff too, as we just go along.
It's mostly the fire relief though, right? Where those dollars are coming from?
No.
No?
No.
Not anymore.
It's, it's a good question. So how do the events get funded? So individual organizational sponsored events are budgeted by those. So the pancake breakfast, that's the Lions and the Boy Scouts. The relief dance, if they have one, that's the relief. It's their own budget, it's their own event. We coordinate them all at the same time. Our budget covers the public elements, so the parade, the events at the park are really the two big items that we pay for. We also pay for a large portion of some of the larger ancillary costs, like the advertising for fire rescue days, porta-potties for fire rescue days, not centrally located in the downtown or along the parade route. So there's a lot of those types of costs that go with it. Other events that we pay for out of there, we, the Halloween is parties all ours, and the Easter recon is all ours as well. Historically, we used to have larger external revenue sources. We used to have substantial revenues that we would be obtained, and a lot, larger participation from the business community in those events. And as a result, they cash flow well, and we also had some reserves which we've been able to enhance events with. But we don't have it anymore. And speaking bluntly, there hasn't been as much interest in the CCEC to go all-in-hand fundraiser for those events. Ninety percent of it was done by Sandy. And eventually, she just ran out of time and capacity to be able to do it, and she's gone with us. And we don't have time and capacity to dedicate city staff to go all-in-hand fundraiser for those events.
Another idea for the record that Corey had was to stock potentially a pond with fish that we could use some of that money for. Kind of joking.
Yeah, that was Corey's idea.
That was all Corey's idea.
What, Lake Elko or what?
Beavers, Lake Elko.
No, that was my idea, or just an idea to throw out. Do we have to decide today?
We need to know what's in the preliminary budget, so. Oh, for the sweep? No. We can make that decision on the sweep at a later date because if it's going to be used for any of the purposes that you've mentioned aside from sweeping to Capital Projects Fund, those can be done at any time. If we sweep into the Capital Projects Fund, we can do that anytime through the budget process, and it would show us a benefit to the, you know, equal amount of benefit to the budget. Kelly just needs to get some direction to show she knows what to draft for purposes of the official action. So we could put table that if you wanted to until the twenty, till twenty-second.
Yeah, let's table it.
Table it? Okay.
Why are you guys like thinking? I mean, what are you thinking?
I, I'm, I'm more, I'm more on putting it into capital outlay.
Outlay or Capital Projects?
Capital Projects Fund, thank you.
If we get two votes, let's take two votes.
I want to spend it on community events.
Hey, we got.
Do we need a motion or is it just direction?
It would be direction, and I'm not hearing clear direction at this point.
Well, I think the majority of the council says let's move it into the CE, CCEC at the moment. That's what I would propose.
So do you, do you guys want us to prepare an action? I mean, if, if that's the direction, we can prepare an action item at consent at the next council meeting for the sweep, or we could have additional discussion with council at a future meeting.
I say let's put it on the consent, let somebody poll it, and then we can have a discussion.
Sounds good.
All right.
It's only three people here.
No, I think most of mine say, well, let's just talk a little bit.
Well, and if I did say it's going to be polled based on individual council members, it'll just be under technicality.
Fantastic.
So what I'm hearing is that the only direction at this point that you're giving related to the budget itself is that we should change the assumption from thirty-five housing units or their equivalent back to twenty-five, and that, unless, and then any other changes that come up between that. And when we send out the preliminary budget, can that be correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all we have.
Now you have THC edibles. Is that you?
That would be Renee. She's our expert on THC edibles. From a regulatory standpoint.
Very, no, I'm not that particular about it, but I try. Jennifer is going to do the presentation, but it's going to be a little small, so I'm going to have to check. Okay. So we've heard a lot of talk about the THC and edibles and the new law that was passed by the legislature. Two, just a little background. On it, in two thousand and eighteen, the Farm Bill legalized hemp production, and nothing in that bill prohibited deriving Delta eight and Delta ten products from hemp and creating anything from motions to edibles. They are, Delta eight and Delta ten are considered non-intoxicating cannabinoids. And they are federally legal, but they are not regulated by the FDA. Starting July first in Minnesota, edibles and beverages containing Delta nine THC, which is the compound responsible for marijuana's high, became legal to consume, sell, produce, and transport so long as they, the product is derived from hemp and contains under point three percent Delta nine THC. Delta nine is more potent than both Delta eight and Delta ten. And I believe there's still question, and Andrea may know more about this, question of whether Delta nine is federally legal. It's, yeah, it's not federally legal, it's my understanding. So the state legalized it, although it's not federally legal. So under the new law, a person must be twenty-one years old to sell or purchase. But we don't know if someone can possess it under the age of twenty-one. The law doesn't define that. No more than five milligrams per edible or beverage, and no more than fifty milligrams per package are allowed. Cannot be marketed to children. The packaging is not supposed to resemble, you know, candy. Violations of the law. to resemble, you know, candy. Violations of the law that were passed are misdemeanors. So these are some of the regulations. Beyond this, there really aren't a lot of regulations, and it's left to the cities to direct, address new products on their own and how they wish to handle it. Some cities have passed licensing regulations, similar to tobacco or alcohol licensing. Some cities are considering zoning regulations, and some cities are considering moratoriums until the state legislature perhaps amends the law for this, that's a session to make some items more clear. And so, as touched on, nothing in the new law that we know of limits the city's authority to zoning authority related to the THC product. So one approach will be to specifically prohibit them, or regu, not prohibit, but regulate them in certain areas of the city through zoning. Right now, in the city, they can be sold wherever retail is allowed, it can be manufactured wherever manufacturing is allowed, and distributed wherever distribution is allowed. All cities in Scott County, besides the city of Savage and us, have adopted moratoriums on the sale, manufacture, and distribution of THC nine products. Scott County also is a language authority over ten townships, and they passed a moratorium on, passed to man closely. So all communities have adopted a one-year moratorium. I think partially with focus that the state legislature will further define the issue in law, except the city of Shock, these moratoriums is only through the end of the year. Under state law, if we do adopt a moratorium, we do have to be continually working on it. We can't just throw our hands up and just wait it out and be researching about the matter. Some cities are handling it through licensing. I think we know, like you mentioned, we had a first hour group meeting today, I think this was Dyna, Mary.
Yeah, so through scale, specific with scale service delivery, the topic has come up. And since a lot of the cities are, have already placed moratoriums, we need to be working on the issue. It was thought it would be good, pooled resources and establish some working groups to start working through the issues associated with it. And first meeting was today, which would, I think, be very productive. One of the things, finding out is that there's a lot of question, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered related to how it is regulated at this particular moment, but even the effort of identifying those. But we know from discussions, city of Dupree is moving forward very aggressively. They have already, they were the first one to pass a moratorium, and they'll probably be the first one to add some form of regulatory items in place. Shock and Peace in mind, the, not far behind them, doing the same thing. The other communities, I think, are taking a more measured approach where they're putting, they're hoping to put a moratorium in place to get an opportunity to research the topic, possibly through the research to be able to feedback to legislators, what would be helpful, and then be able to adjust or put something in place that reflects any changes that might come on the upcoming session.
The city of Belle Plaine did have one, they have a tobacco store or CBD store that started selling product before the moratorium went into effect, so they have one that's, they're considered grandfathered. The city of Jordan has one that is actually selling and manufacturing gummies that was also, also started before the moratorium was in place. So quite certain that there's probably sales taking place in many of the other cities, but it's not really documented, other than those two, which are considered grandfathered under their moratorium. So this is just a table that shows the different zoning districts we have. We have six different, five different business zoning districts where retail is basically of permitted use. And so if, you know, an absence of us taking any action, somebody today would be able to sell gummies at any, in any business district, with the exception of a liquor store, which is perfectly under state guidance. And then we have E-six, I-one, and I-two, which have permitted manufacturing and warehousing and distribution.
Some of the other items that have come up with regards to retail sale are, there's very limited restrictions. Can you sell it at your horn stand? It's an edible. Can you have a food truck that drives around to all the places that food trucks can customarily go on, which have edibles?
But it would have to be in a business district, correct?
Food trucks, it would be limited to wherever food trucks can go. So there, because of the, it, it is wide open, and so with regards to where you can sell and how you can sell, manufacturer is the same.
But it, could it be those if it's, because it, does it still have to abide by or comply with the twenty percent of the gross floor of the building if it's a food truck? Can it only be twenty percent of the food truck's square footage or whatever?
No, that only applies in the industrial zoning districts, you know, like MyPillow has a manufacturing facility, but they have a retail component in the front.
So the gas station, Fish Rock could flip and be all hundred percent selling, and that's it, they get closed on everything else?
Yeah, yeah. Fish Rock could, yeah, they could sell, a hundred percent of their store could be gums.
D-Note could decide that they're going to change directions. So it, there really is very limited, there, there really are no restrictions to be handled with any other retail use.
This is the city's current zoning map, so this is the current city limits. You know, if we go through it, but you kind of get just the core downtown. Anything that's red is basically a place that you can sell at this point in time. This is our future language map, which shows our visions. Anything that's pink on this map and blue in the, in the downtown that is ready to sell. Anything that's kind of purple or light purple, you could manufacture and like redistribute with accessory sales. Just some other things to consider. There are employment concerns. This isn't something that we're really discussing in our world group, but as it relates to CBL holders and firearm owners, great tackle, great law, during the last meetings. Even though it'd be technically illegal for these employees to consume the products off duty, there's still concerns of how the ability to carry a federally regulated firearm, I don't think for these officers, for these officers. So, and then questions about revenue, taxation considerations. Tax, tax, tax probably currently loaded the state, I think in one of the other states that was studied heavily, there was some thought that some of the revenue was gonna come down to the municipalities to help with enforcement, especially law enforcement, which didn't happen in that case, so question about that. Local licenses for sellers would allow cities to better manage retail sales in their community. As of now, state testing is basically not existent. Testing requirements, there aren't any.
Testing product, you mean?
Right. So testing product to verify that they're meeting the requirements is, there's no agency that's overseeing that. So it could be, they could be manufactured in somebody's basement or, you know, in this little business in Jordan. There's really no one to test the, the.
So just as we get back to public health, like the safety, but it gets back to compliance with the restrictions that are placed with the current law with regards to level of concentration, act J, etc.
The DCA would be flooded, because I think that's the only agency, one of the only agencies that can test for that.
I think you're right. In the police department, we were talking about it today, and they said that they just, they won't test. If you sent, if you sent in a sample, they wouldn't
So you've said multiple times, I keep hearing retail, retail, retail. Is that specific in, and I should know this, the THC can, that's where it can be sold? Because I see a different definition or primitive view. So I see restaurants separated out from retail establishments. So it couldn't be sold at a restaurant? So it's not just limited to retail? Like, that's what I wanna, okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because it can be in, you.
It could be in any business.
Infused drinks.
Correct. The only, basically the only place you can't.
Is a liquor store.
Sell it as a liquor store, because they're not permitted to sell. And so.
It's considered food property. And they are infusing, you know, drinks with it.
I was just gonna say, even if it's an infused drink, instead of the actual edible?
Well, Jake was at a brewery in Northwest past weekend, and they had.
They had them?
But they had a packaged THC. I don't think there was alcohol in it, but it was a THC drink. And I was at a music festival, and they were, they sent them all up.
They had them in the cooler out at the world, Minnesota's largest candy store, and I was out there with the kids over there, so.
At the candy store they did?
Over by the door.
Wow.
It's not in the state?
It's prohibited now. Just gotta test one for him. Wow. So this is, I guess, informational design, and we're looking for a direction. If, if you want us to take any, city staff is involved with scale, or group that's studying, are identifying issues related to the matter. And I know Josh House also is sitting on a work with, with our leading municipal cities.
And I just forwarded an email to, I forgot to send it to you, it was last Friday, said Alex Hassel from the League is owning this piece of it. She does a lot of the regulatory stuff, but because I was part of the task force, they asked me and somebody else, I don't remember who, to present, and I haven't read the talking points I'm supposed to be talking about at next week's policy committee. So it's, it's got more information in there. But a lot of the stuff that you covered, and I think I'm hitting on the public, or public health side, the policing side, and something else, so.
And other, other civil police officers in our work group, or police chiefs in particular, or one is just extremely concerned about police officers and them being properly trained, that there must be some special training that certain officers go through for drug.
Drug recognition?
Drug, drug recognition, and currently in Scott County, there are only two individuals in each county that have been trained in that.
So a, so a drug recognition expert is a fairly high level, and it is the only way to test, because you can't go on additional, there isn't a way to.
So it's basically a higher regiment of tests to determine if somebody's impaired. And it's a battery of tests that can take two hour, I mean, most, I was a DRE when I was a police officer, and it's, you know, it's like a two-hour test to determine what it is. So it's, it's, it's a lot.
So at the end of the day, we're looking to find out, what does the council want to do? Do you just want to sit back and wait? Are you interested in putting, interested in putting a moratorium in place to allow us to further examine this issue? We have a lot more time for the council to have the policy discussion on it. Are you interested in putting a moratorium in place, directing staff to, for looking at potential regulations related to the topic? So do you want to touch it? And if so, how aggressive is really what we're looking for, question?
Personally, I would be for putting a moratorium in place, just because there's way, way, way too many unknowns, and a lot of things that need to be addressed. So I think we, I think we would need the time to kind of do some research, and there obviously needs to be more things done with the state legislature on this topic as well. I mean, I agree, we need more time, absolutely not gonna rush into the policy, the license or tax or enforce or any of that stuff. I guess my question would be, do we need to put a moratorium on it? What is the risk we run of not putting it on it with the current number of places that could actually sell it, aside from the folks that decided to fill up the back of a truck and go sell it on the side of the street or something? You know, does that put us in a box that we have to be working on and dedicate staff time that we are already limited on? So, I mean, be more reactive versus proactive about it. We see a group or we see something start to pop up. I mean, obviously it allows them to be grandfathered in, so we rebound that risk, but I don't know. I do, is there like a set, like, amount of staff time that we feel is gonna have to be dedicated to it if we put a moratorium on it?
So if you do a moratorium, you have plenty to do that, so I think we can start working on it, but ultimately the thought is that the legislature's gonna clean up the mess that we're involved in, before you even need to do that. We have a number of cities, we have F-one moratorium ordinances for HBL, where we've got a draft licensing ordinance that we've done in our cities.
So it shouldn't, shouldn't cost us much to get a copy of that draft?
No, it shouldn't. Essentially, except that you guys want a monkey with.
Right.
I, we haven't seen cities doing zoning ordinance amendments yet, but they may be looking at, well, there's nothing more for any place, so.
Within the county, people get moratorium in place so that they have time to figure out their approach. A number of them are looking at interim regulation options. There is the feeling that the legislature will do something with this, and I think that's everybody's hope. I've been in the game long enough to know that they can talk about doing something with it, but.
We saw what happened this.
It may not be done until late in session, maybe it's done in session, maybe in a special session, we just, we don't know. Moratorium does give us time, and you're asking about the number of hours, Josh. This type of work can, I mean, can take time, but it's not just like the number of hours, it's also the time it takes over a period of time to do it. Working with other county cities through scale partnerships will lighten the load on individual organizations, but that, it just, it takes time. And so even though you can put the moratorium in place for a year, you don't have to use the whole year. If, if you've got it all worked out, or it works out in time, even though he's dropped the moratorium, it's not, it's not a project.
Whether or not you adopt a moratorium, which are not advocated for one or the other, it's, we're still gonna be studying the issue.
Right.
But we're still gonna be participating in the work.
The issue you start to run into is the grandfathering issue. You have businesses that make significant investments in inventory or models. You have businesses that may be holding up, that may be making significant investments. And then you have those in place, and it's a pretty deal of that. This basically puts a pause for everybody in place. I think the advantage we have compared to some of our neighbors is, to our knowledge at this point, and, and police department data, white and informal inquiry, we're not aware of any businesses that are currently selling, and if they are, they're not doing it to a significant degree at this point in time.
But, not that we have to name names, but there has been inquiry on the topic in town, correct, from a business or two?
So when we did that, I mean, we have a recurring relationship with all of our businesses, and the police department does, and so a couple of the businesses indicated that they, you know, are thinking about, no immediate plans to do it, but, you know, it's, it's out there, it's on the table. And another business indicated that they're not planning on doing it, but they would like to preserve the option to do it. So again, providing for more time might also provide for more discussion and engagements as well.
If you were to adopt a licensing ordinance, anybody who had started selling would no longer be able to sell, except to the extent of the ordinance, so there's no grandfather there.
The one concern I, I, from my zoning perspective, is I really don't know anything about the manufacturing, the equipment, the smells of, out of the, the, when we did research regarding manufacturing medical marijuana, we did learn that does create a constant twenty-four-hour smell of, you know, just around the property owners of marijuana.
Realistically, I mean, and I, I know nothing about this. I mean, are they, big building? I mean, can I manufacture in my garage? I mean, with the equipment, I mean, like.
Most likely.
But I, and could I do it in a residential district then? And it doesn't matter?
Not even.
Ever? I mean, so, so then it wouldn't matter. But, yeah, I don't see somebody just popping up and start making it. That's what I just.
I do. I do.
So there's, you can only make, the legislature is about to state laws that restrict how many cannot. can operate, manufacturers and dispensaries in state? And where they can use it?
Medical marijuana.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not related to THC gums or.
There's, there's no, there are restrictions.
Yeah, I think there's, you can only.
Make it count each of the two have eight.
Yes.
And up to two each.
And a dispensary is, it's almost like a pharmacy, very regulated, they're highly regulated by the state.
And they can, and they can also have manufacturing.
I already gave my.
I already gave my thoughts on it. I think we should put a moratorium until, until we get some more info and we get some better direction from our friends at the state.
Your state favor today, not in a four-year.
She with DHS?
The state has lots of the departments.
I have a good question. So you don't have a lot of faith in the legislature favoring the ball of the sector?
I'm just saying that there's a, you go into the legislature, there's a possibility that they might not, or maybe not until, I mean, we could be in the middle of next year before they have it worked out. It all depends on the, the legislature after this fall's election, the nature of discussion. You know, there's a lot of variables that we don't know. I, I just, in the past on other issues, oh, yep, they'll get it figured out this next session. Ah.
Well, really, all, all we're doing is saying, we're not saying no, they can't ever in the future, we're just saying not right now.
Correct. We're just putting a pause.
It's a, it's a pause.
If you do a moratorium.
Do you have strong feelings?
No, I just, I don't think we're at risk that much by not doing anything, and I'm fine doing the moratorium. I don't think anything's going to get figured out next session, quite honestly, with a split government again, and both houses, the House and Senate being different from the governor, hopefully. So I think we're going to be spacing the same question in June, and, I mean, we'll know a lot more, but it's not going to be fixed or from the, from the state level.
And then that would give us sufficient time if we're waiting for a longer-term certification at state level, we can figure out what we're going to do locally in the interim.
If the moratorium is in place?
Question for anybody, I guess, but if we were to move quickly and more aggressively, like New Prague or others, to do licensing or taxing and stuff like that, if something changed at the state level, does that supersede what we do at the local level? Or could we get out in front of it and?
Depends. I would hazard a guess that they would say you can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive, however they adopt the licensing or something. I think you want to consider, you know, how far away from the school district? And that, who live outside and sell, you had tons of people out of the state there, so many that are staying there. So those are, are bright differences.
I just, let's start taxing.
Well, the biggest, the biggest thing that concerns me is the fact that there isn't any possession laws in place with this.
Right.
So you can buy, you're 21, walk into a store, 21, here you go. Now you got somebody who's in possession of it, that's maybe.
16.
17. Whatever. And there's no laws against that. There's nothing that can be done about it.
Well, and with or without a moratorium, I mean, people can purchase it in other, like Minneapolis, they're not moving on anything, like they flat out said at the last meeting work group. I mean, they're going to keep it, just keep moving and seeing what happens. They're not putting a moratorium or doing anything. So they're thinking, I can go buy it up in Minneapolis and bring it back down here.
Sure.
Regardless, so it's just restricting the access to it, I suppose.
Renee, when you're doing your research, do you contact any of our neighbors to the south or east, see what they're doing?
Have we gotten feedback from, like, school districts or anything like that yet? Have they weighed in? I just.
Like those directors, they're licensing. I feel like they have a sort of settlement.
How'd you find out about that?
A neighbor. It's now, it's now out there.
Well, it's just where it's so hard, because I, I specifically went into the Main Street CBD right next to Von Hanson's when I was going to Von Hanson's the other day and just asked him, the owner there, of how it impacted their business or whatever. And he said it really restricted their business because they had stuff on the shelves prior to and in the storage in the back that they no longer can sell, that it don't meet the container requirements or above the five, 50 grams or whatever, milligram, whatever the heck it is. So he said it's actually, you know, restricted what they were able to sell on June 30th compared to now. So I.
I think we just let it be. I was just going, I don't know if we want to wait till.
You do have the option to table this discussion until the next meeting. Do you think the inclusion of the two additional council members would be beneficial?
I don't know, that's your favorite, Bryce.
In, in this, in this case, I think it would be okay to wait for the other two to weigh in on it as well. I mean, it's not something we have to be in a crazy rush over, but it would be something that I think we should act on soon, especially when there's inquiry about it, just talk about it.
And I could do the same thing, because I think, you know, while I go for a moratorium, if everybody else is strongly for it, I'm also fine with just letting it wait too. Kind of like that, whatever about it.
All right, we'll leave it at that.
So we'll continue it under the, under the next agenda, we'll just recycle the materials that we have. If something new and exciting comes up on the copy, we'll include that as well.
Well, and like I, it's in that email, so the Tuesday or Monday service delivery meeting will establish the League's policy on it, assuming that it gets adopted and then recommended for the board to act on in October or whenever they do, but at least that'll be kind of more affirmed up, so I think we can kind of get back to.
I have one question. How can something that's federally illegal, be legal by a state that just, can you explain that because of that, some of the global states outside of the North, federal companies?
But even medical cannabis, I mean, we deal with that in our assisted livings and folks that are on federal waivers. I mean, technically, they have choice, but, and if we're not federally cert, but we are kind of federally certified to be able to accept the federal waiver money. It's illegal, but it's legal in Minnesota. So you have providers that have to decide, do they risk?
Yeah, it's still recognized as a Schedule I.
Yeah. And they have to operate with cash. These facilities, they don't know how they do that and make sell other things.
I think that's happening.
My daughter lives in Kefka in Colorado, and she said, yeah, all transactions. Any additional forward messages?
No, excuse me, question?
I think for public works, offices.
Not beyond that. Those are provided. If you have any questions, I may only answer it. Not refer to the Department of Defense, if we need to update them forward through one of our updates.
And, you know?
No report.
Community developments? Parks?
I do have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Have we heard anything else from Quotra?
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah. They sent, you know, last week, that said that there's some supply chain issues in being able to get underground tanks, maybe for the diesel portion of the project, which was, was on the left side of the building. So their plan is to still move forward with the modified plan without that portion and build that later and that.
It's that far out? That they either like.
There's still a lot to be looked at from the legislature, depending on so much that people will be there.
Glad I asked.
I wonder if they'll sell it. Fits the name.
That was one of your better jokes.
That was good.
Anything for parks?
Nothing in addition to the Rick report that was included in the package.
CCE two, the 20th, when did he get in the pool? The picnic was a success. Lots of good feedback. I heard a lot of partners was not there, you know, you have to talk back on all the things. Let's see, scale, the meeting is tomorrow, here on the agenda.
Correct. So it'll be a brief update related to the regional training facility, but the manager for the facility who's been basically managing it since it was originally established is retiring, and I just tapped on his shoulder to give the retiring speech, so to speak.
Anything for the service level?
Service delivery, the primary item for discussion actually was the THC topic. Our upcoming might, the item for September, the primary aim is basically going to be a discussion with representatives from the learner and housing committee. They want to get feedback from individual cities to what they feel the greatest barriers are to being able to achieve their housing goals or to be able to meet the market demand that's been identified in the recent CDA study, so that they can start looking at strategies or ways to help remove those barriers.
I-35, anyone else cancel?
It was, three months in a row, so we'll have a meeting next month.
Is there a particular reason why they're just going to cancel?
August is usually the month that they skip. They don't, they usually have anything. July was light, so they just said, we're not going to meet until September. And then, I'm not sure why they canceled September. I'll find out next month, probably.
They're avoiding you, and they don't want to.
Yeah, that could, that could be.
Bryce, tell them. Any discussion by council?
Just a quick update. The New Prague area schools community task force, the climate task force thing, they're starting that back up again, so we have three meetings scheduled for our one in October, one in November, one in December. Just got that email a little bit ago. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Josh, second, Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Any?